Thank you, and we'll do roll call attendance.
Certainly, Bartlett.
Yes.
S. Cortaid.
Here.
M. Cortaid.
Here.
Cook.
Here.
Lyle.
Here.
Walters.
Present.
And Friend.
Here. Okay, agenda. We will review for conflict of interest. We have a consent agenda, does not have any other items on it, but does have the board minutes and the fund payments. Before the board, we have the Grand Travis County and DTE road request, zoning ordinance amendments, the Beach District Corridor Improvement Authority, Residential Housing District and Brownfield Programs, and staffing. Oh, and I do want to add, after the Beach District, we'll put this for D and move the others to E and F, the Rotary Charity Grant Agreement. And that document's on your desk, and you should have received an email about it today. So with that, is there anybody who declares a conflict of interest on any of the items? Okay, seeing none, is there approval for the agenda as amended?
I make the motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Support.
Okay, there's a motion by Bartlett and support by Walters. Any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Okay, motion passes. With that, it brings us to public comment. It's the first opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to make public comment, please come to the podium and introduce yourself. Hi, Jason, how are you?
Good.
Go ahead and introduce yourself for people watching.
I'm Jason Gilman, 933 Avenue D, there in District 1. I was catching the Beach District item in the agenda, and I just felt the need to come and comment. I've been a property owner and resident in this township since 1989. I'm speaking today to express serious concerns about the proposed Beach District Corridor Improvement Authority. I've seen this kind of effort before, in fact, over a decade ago, myself and others, we were directly involved in opposing the similar Miracle Mile authority that was proposed, and fortunately, it ended, and many of the same people who are on this board today saw that it would end, fortunately. The concerns I have remain the same. Another layer of government further removed from the people with the ability to redirect tax dollars and impose decisions without direct accountability to voters, not a good idea, no matter how it's dressed up or disguised to look appealing. It is an entire building and nothing more. I recognize that improving infrastructure and encouraging development are valid goals, but this approach, delegating the power to a new permanent authority, is not the right way to do it. It hands long-term control to an unelected body with little practical oversight, and it shifts the hard decisions and potential backlash away from those who the community actually elects. Ronald Reagan said, "Nothing is so permanent as a temporary government program." This proposal fits that description too well. Once created, this kind of bureaucracy rarely shrinks and seldom goes away. It persists, it grows. I strongly urge the board to reconsider this resolution of intent. If there's a need, address it openly, transparently, and directly through the mechanisms we already have. Don't offload the township's responsibility onto a quasi-governmental body where residents have no direct voice or legitimately represented voice. Eternal vigilance is necessary. Please listen to this, the community, and don't move forward with this authority. I'd also like to ask respectfully and rhetorically, when was the last time this board took deliberate action to reduce the complexities of dealing with local government? When was the last time East Bay Township pursued policies that made property ownership feel more like actual ownership and less like permission-based tenancy? When was the last time this board made zoning simpler, clearer, and less expensive to navigate, whether for residents, builders, realtors, small businesses, trying to stay in compliance while contributing to our community? No answer is necessary, but I think these are the kinds of questions that we need to be asking before we create another structure of governance layered upon what already exists. And other than that, I see you have a road commission item on the agenda. If you need me here, I can stick around, or if it's just for discussion outside of that, usually, we would have somebody here, but apparently, there's not, so I could stay for that if you need me to stay here and answer any questions that I may or may not have answers to.
Very good, thank you. Any questions for Jason? I just have one, as long as you're here from the road commission. I realize that there's discussion regarding the county taking over the road commission. What is your opinion on that?
I think it would be a fool's errand for the county.
Oh, even though the road commission is run by appointed officials?
The road commission, it's...
It's a further layer of government.
Yeah, it exists already, and I understand where you're trying to go logically with this. It is, we exist as property owners, and my property exists in that specific zone that you'd like to do. So if you're trying to make a comparison, there really is none. You're going to change the rules on us while we're living there. Now, as far as the road commission, the road commission is enacted by the state, okay? The road commissions, they have a legislative authority. Now, the counties can take them, and that's fine if they want to take them, but insofar as direct accountability, there is still accountability, and they have a pretty specific mission, and it's the roads. It's not deciding what people can build, where they can build it. It's literally the safety and efficacy of our road system, so it's not even a comparison. I understand your logical conclusion, but it's not logical. Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, with that, any other public comment? Yes? How are you today?
I'm good. I want to get your mic.
Okay.
He's got control.
He does.
I hope they can see me. Bob Chauvin, 854 Avenue C, the Pine Grove neighborhood. I've lived there also since 1989, and I've also sat here and watched this board, and several boards, probably over the last six, five years, and I find the decisions these boards make are well-thought-out, and the staff, they're doing an excellent job, in my opinion. I represent the silent majority in the area, and I think the Beach District is an excellent idea and moves this place forward. It's fresh, new ideas, and I think in this day and age, that's what we need, fresh, new ideas. So I appreciate people like Claire, people that worked hard here. This is a great board, and I think you're all doing a good job, and I think this is a well-thought-out project, so keep going. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening. Jay said we did not pay him to deliver public comment. That's right, that's right. We all have a perspective, so any other public comment? Thank you for both of those. Okay, we will move on to correspondence and reports. You do have some items in your packet, the traditional road commission updates, which we thank the road commission for those, we include them in our packets, treasures support, supervisors' meeting log, and grant tracking. I was really quite glad to do the grant tracking, because I have to say, the list that you have in front of you, I realize it was pretty small in the packet, so I printed it on the legal size, didn't, this is not even conclusive, as Sue knows, we've got some election grants in there. We also have some fellowships we didn't include that is a financial gain for the township. But just the ones that were more immediate, and does comprise the majority of them, I was a little surprised at the numbers. So 15.4 million in grant applications is a lot of work, but we have some pretty good results with that, as you can see, just with the numbers here. The amount that gets skewed by how much you ask, but we're doing better over 50% of those that we've been looking at are, you know, where we're getting, so we're pretty excited about that. And just in the ones that we have here, we're pretty close to $7 million that we've been able to leverage those revenues that we do have, so thank you for asking for those. It would have you notice that where it says "grant match," many of those are repetitive because the grant match is required, and sometimes, we're submitting multiple grants across programs for the same project. So you can't really total the grant match column up and get a number that says like, well, this is what we're committed to. You would have to take each project and then take the individual amount of that grant request and total those. So if you have any further questions on that, please be sure to reach out. With that, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Ann, if you'd go over the consent agenda?
Certainly. The purpose of the consent agenda is to expedite business by grouping non-controversial items together to be dealt with by one board motion without discussion. Any member of the board, staff, or the public may ask that any item on the consent agenda be removed and placed elsewhere on the agenda for full discussion. Such requests will be automatically respected. If any item is not removed from the consent agenda, the action noted in parentheses on the agenda is approved by a single board action adopting the consent calendar. This evening, you have minutes from May 12, 2025, recommend approval. The general fund, check numbers 19524 through 19574, the amount of $80,325.08, and check number 19309 was previously approved. From the emergency fund, check numbers 5930 through 5951, paid in the amount of $19,034.89, and check numbers 8555855 and 5858 were previously approved. The receiving fund, check numbers 2980 through 2981, paid in the amount of $92,455.37. The escrow fund, check numbers 2086 through 2089, for $60,930.48. There was nothing from the roads SAD fund, and there were two payrolls. The first one, May 4 through May 17, check number 7929 through 7933, totaled $87,226.24. And the payroll dated May 18 through May 31, check number 7934 through 7937, total $91,127.77. Total payroll was $178,354.09, and total amount paid $431,099.83. There are no budget adjustments or other items.
Okay, very good, thank you. Would anybody like anything moved off of the consent agenda, though we don't have much on there this week, this month, rather?
I've got just one comment. Doesn't have to be moved, I'm just looking for, you know, maybe some direction for you. I've mentioned this to you in the past, the, when's the road commission supposed to be in front of the board again? Would it be?
July.
It'd be in July. Maybe we can save it until then. The report that they send us, I can't ever follow it. I mean, it just, you know, there's not, there's stuff in here that I don't think we should be concerned about a cat excavator in the shop for repairs, but also, like, what's the, I'm just always curious what some of the activity is supposed to be coming up, what, where some dates and some meat and potatoes as to some of the projects that are going to be executed here soon, around the corner.
Sure.
I don't know if that's something we need to address with them next month?
Well, that's within our correspondence, but absolutely, you have a road commissioner here who will, I'm sure, mention that as well. Dan will, I'm sure, be here next month, and so we can talk to him about that. And I would say Dan and Kylie probably are the, not to diminish your role by any means, but they're the, you know, ones who put that work into that report, so that probably would be best something that we carve out a little time to cover that next month, I think. Sounds good.
Ma'am, just one, do you get their weekly updates that they send out?
I don't think so.
You can go on their website and sign up to get updates. They'll either email it or text it, and it tells where they're doing work and what work they're doing for the next week. It usually comes out on Thursdays.
Okay, I'll keep that in mind.
I just, I use that because I've been waiting for traffic to be backed up by Three Mile, but...
The text, do you have a text? Yeah. Okay. All right, very good, thank you. Is there any member of the public who would like anything removed from the consent agenda? Who will bring that back to the board? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as...
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, there's a, Bartlett has moved and Cook has supported the consent agenda, and we'll do a roll call vote, Ann.
Bartlett.
Yes.
Cook.
Yes.
M. Cortaid.
Yes.
Lyle.
No.
S. Cortaid.
Yes.
Walters.
Yes.
And Friend.
Yes. Okay, thank you very much. With that, we will move to the Grand Travis County Road Commission and DTE request, and thank you for staying around for that, Jason. So with this, DTE had reached out, as you probably know, and it's been on our website. They did some work in the Pine Grove area and on Parsons last year, ended up, I think they were even into more of an area than they thought they would be going up to on, on, yeah, on Pine Grove, Pine Grove Avenue, and you'll see that spot that's highlighted in the picture there. They had to pull up part of that road, but they only had to pull up half of it, so they had cold patched it last, what is that, like, November, October, or something like that? And we're coming back to it this spring. They reached out to the township, and I, in turn, reached out to Dan Watkins. He was definitely interested in pursuing that. It was a cost of 20, oh, let's see, $28,860. And they were looking for half of it to be covered by the township, or the road commission, or both. And so Dan said he would like, he presented to me if we would split that with him. So our portion would be $72.15. You know, is that a little bit more than what we would do with an SAD? Yes. Also, this is going to be a tight area to do an SAD in, we know that. It's an opportunity to do that all-in-one fill swoop, and as a matter of fact, I think they've already been doing some of that, but I am recommending to this board that we participate, and told Dan that I would recommend to this board that we participate at the $72.15. As you see in the budget implications, we have $60,000 budgeted in that line item with $22.5 committed, and we do not have any road SADS that look like they will hit this year that are at a point in time that it looks like they'll hit. Mindy?
Money that's set aside at the road commission for East Bay Township projects.
I asked about that. They would not use that on this designation of road. That was the first thing, yeah.
And the road commission will partner for the other amount?
Yes, it is within Dan's discretionary spending amount, so he could do that, yes.
The question I would have is, when whoever bid that project to do that, why wasn't it explained that they would pave? You can't pave half of a junk road.
Oh, they were going to pave half of a junk road?
I know, but it should have been whoever, whether it was the road commission or somebody, should have sat down and said, "If you guys are going to do the gas line, you're going to have to do the whole road."
Yeah, so I did push DTE probably at least three times, because they always are offering, you've seen DTE sponsor different community things in the area, and so I pushed them several times, like, you know, this would be one good area to do that. And they did not want to pursue doing that in this way, and I did that last fall and again this spring. And of course, this spring, we were doing it, I believe it too, was above Chris Hackbar's budget amount that he could do, and the spring as well, so that's why we ended up contacting the road commission.
We got anything from the road?
Sure, go ahead.
I'm kind of chomping at the bit. The project, which of course, when it was all over, was a federal project, and it was a really nice finish. Then along came DT and its contractors, and they tore up all those nice aprons, as you know, along the way, and frankly, I was infuriated. If you go back and you watch the videos, you can hear me screaming about it at least three or four times in different meetings. DTE does not own up to its responsibilities. When they were contracting for this, they were not supposed to be digging up any of those aprons. They were not supposed to be digging up any of our road. It was supposed to be all, you know, tunnel, however they do it, you know? And honestly, you know, it's up to Dan, and I think, you know, thank you if you're going to join us and help keep Dan under his discretionary spending amount, but DT should be picking up the entire cost of the repairs and make it as nice as it was when that federal contract was finished and signed off on. And that's my position from the road commission, and I think you'd find at least three or five of those on the board would agree.
Unfortunately, that time has come and gone.
Well, I understand it.
Yeah.
Just a little perspective, and that's why, you know, what, going forward, though, I think we need to make sure that when DT is going to be doing work in our township, they have a clear understanding of where we stand. We let them railroad us on a lot of situations like this, and they're just going to keep doing it as long as we allow them to.
So I'm assuming when they came to do this project, they get permitted through the road commission?
And they were supposed to bore.
Okay.
That was, that was the permission they had, was to bore, and then they, what they did is they trenched, and you have properties over there, you know, they destroyed the ends of our roads. No, they're back to normal usable, but they're not going to last as long now.
And we do, for example, with this project on Parsons, when it went through last year, we did not hear from DT until two weeks before they were on that project. And so...
The year before, when the road was torn?
Mm-hmm. And something similar we're trying to ward off this year is, they were supposed to be doing along 31, and looking at 31, so I'm like, you need to get with us because we're having roadwork done at the intersection of Three, well, not, we're not, but the community is having construction done at Three Mile and US 31, and so we need to integrate those. Well, as it turns out, they're pushing that back because they're now moving on to the railroad easement, so we are supposed to meet with them the beginning of the summer so that we can talk to them about how we can leverage their work on that railroad line with the TART trail and with some work that the conservancy and TART has been doing in that area as far as crossings and paths and so forth. So we're trying to, you know, get them to think a little more forward and collaboratively with that. Chris is a great person to deal with, but, you know, he's not the only person at DT and not the only person making those decisions.
I just have clarity. They work on any properties in our township anymore.
I mean, I think really, we would rely on the road commission to, like you said, they were supposed to be bored, so that's great. On this portion, I know, I agree with Glenn, I wish there would have been an authorizing entity that said, "Nope, you have to do that full road," because to do half the road is ridiculous.
They have a tendency to wait till the end because then you have no choice. We had the same situation at the M-72, M-22 intersection, where they had to literally cut that intersection off at the last minute, and you'd think that has really no impact on the road commission, but it absolutely had an impact on the road commission when you talk about traffic up Gray Road and Cedar Run and all that, and it cost us a lot of money. And it's, these are the things, you know, we need to have clarity with them, or they're just not going to be able to do work in our township. I would insist on it, so...
Or the county, rather.
The county, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I guess, I'm still, this job was done, and when it became time to do the road, cut into the road, whatever, that fell on the road commission. They had to okay that, to be able to do it, and whatever...
They didn't okay it.
No, but there's, I mean, that's our jurisdiction, the road.
Correct.
Okay, so somebody dropped the ball, and I don't know who, and it doesn't make any difference because the road's redone now. But the thing is, I would hope in the future, this never comes back to township, that if they're going to do something with the road, that the county road commission says, "Okay, this is what's going to happen, they're going to sign a contract," whatever they do, and this, and state right in there that you dig up the road, you're going to refinish the whole road.
To the degree of repair that it was in prior to your incursion into the road. I agree, and I don't think the township should be paying this.
Well, honestly, that road was horrible before they cut into it, so...
Half of it was better.
To bring it back to what it was to begin with, wouldn't help us a whole lot.
Well, what it was after our repairs, after our contract was done for the federal project, you know?
Yeah, but this wasn't...
This wasn't in that section?
Pine Grove Avenue.
Okay, well then...
This is over on Pine Grove Avenue from Three Mile back to Mitchell Street.
It'd be hard to have it to...
Yeah.
I mean, it was so pothole patched.
In fact, maybe we could ask DT to do some work straight down the middle of Avenue E or something.
And in all fairness to Dan and to myself, DT gave us about a week to two weeks heads up on this before they were out there with Elmers. Elmers was a good partner in that they agreed to give them a price.
Well, I apologize for jumping ahead because I didn't have copies of that in front of me, and I didn't...
Yeah, you're fine.
Which spots you were talking about specifically, but I knew that they had done work, and there's still some spots on the road that they did some damage to that I just throw my hands up.
So again, we didn't have, Dan Watkins and I did not have much notice at all, and we were really glad that Elmers would even agree to give us a price that was reasonable, tied in with the contract, and even do the work, so...
Well, the only thing I'd say is, we didn't get the notice, but somebody had, the road commission knew what they were going to do, somebody didn't contact us, and now we sit here with this, and they want us to pay for half of it, which it isn't a ton of money in the scope of everything, but it should have never had, fell on the township to pay for it.
You're right in that this is, I don't want to use the word generous, but this is a display of good partnership on the township's part, should we choose to do this. They, DT actually wanted us to fork over all of it, and I brought the road commission in because of that issue, and Dan has a spending limit, there's a certain amount, asked us to partner, and I said, you know, "Let's get this done because the road was so bad, you cannot leave it half and half, it was ridiculous." I don't know why anyone would do that, so...
Can you catch me up? What's on the road now? Did DT do any paving, or is it a gravel road?
So it was like, it was a paved road in just bad shape. They came in, did their improvements, and then patched it for the winter, and then came back in the spring, and then were going to pave half of it, and then, like I said, gave us...
Down the road.
Yeah.
So they haven't done any paving, they're just going to...
No, they have, they have now paved since then, because we had one to two weeks' notice, got in touch with the road commission, they agreed to go forward with it, asked for our partnership. I said, "The next board meeting I have is June, and it's not before that paving, so you realize you're at risk." They do, but they're still asking for that. I said I would recommend it, I do recommend it. I think it was not a great, perfect situation by any means, but again, I think it's a good display of partnership with this.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, I'm just trying to...
Yeah.
Figure out what's going on down there, because if you got half of new pavement, half of the old pavement, now the road commission's going to come in, what are they, just going to top coat it?
No, they, the, Elmers, Elmers agreed to do it all the way across, yeah. Yep. So with that, again, it is an imperfect situation. I will make the motion, I recommended it, to approve that the township partner with the paving of Pine Grove Avenue with the Grand Travis County Road Commission for half of the roadway on the DT project to the tune of $7,215.
Support.
Okay, the motion is made by Friend, supported by M. Cortaid. Is there further discussion? Okay, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no? Thank you, I know it was kind of a quirky situation, and so we appreciate your listening to that and partnering with that. Thank you for saying.
Could I just say one more thing?
You sure can, but you have to come up here so they can catch you.
Just in terms of road commission business, just if you have an opportunity to have some words with our legislators in Lansing, the, there was a bill, or it's passing through, and we're hoping that it gets through, it's going to be a little bit of reallocation of some money for road funding, and what it would mean is double money for local roads here, and it would literally be earmarked for local roads in townships, particularly the minor urban environments.
Do you know what the bill is?
That's what I was going to ask.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, it's really funny, because we just did the Paul Budnian thing about three weeks ago. Bunyan thing about three weeks ago, and.
Is it through the?
That's okay, you can send it to us.
Yeah, I can send it to you.
Is it through the House or the Senate?
The thing is, it's, it's, it's a pretty, pretty much a Republican bill, but I think that Whitmer's going to be real interested in, in passing it because she has to have some kind of legacy when it's all said and done.
Do you know where they're taking the funds from, or?
What they're going to do is they're going to remove the sales tax from the, from gas tax, and can replace it with, and then they're going to use the additional money that's there, because sales tax has to be allocated towards the schools, and then they're going to do other things for the money for the schools. But it's, it is going to increase nearly double the, the input from the state to our local governments now. Does that necessarily mean we're going to have twice as much repair work done? Nope?
Yeah.
Every dollar we get extra, we get about 40% worth of work out of it, because every other county's getting the same dollar, and we're going to be competing for limited resources. However, in situations like the Pine Grove subdivision, it's a disaster, it's a war zone, those roads are terrible in some spots, but maybe it helps us pull something off, and with the experiment, and I say that tongue in cheek, that we're doing with Town Line Road at the same time as the Three Mile Road is being done, we may have some good fixes that are inexpensive and last us long enough to make a difference, so. Just trying to make the money go a little further too, so.
No, the reason I asked where they were taking it from, obviously, to see if it impacts the local funding too, so.
No, it, it's just straight up more.
Okay.
And it really is, County Road Association's all on board with this. It's, it's a pretty, it's a pretty significant increase. You know, we're, we're looking at 1.3 million additional local road funding, not primary road, not, you know, taking away from anything else, just additional funding that will help, for example, on some of those other matches that we do. It would literally be just more money for the townships to use, so.
All right, well, thank you. Okay, with that, we will move on to the zoning ordinance amendments. Claire is here. Let's see, we noticed these, and we have the opportunity to adopt them, correct?
Yep, so, good evening, everyone, there, as you'll, so there was a public hearing by the Planning Commission for all three of these zoning amendments on May 6. They unanimously recommended them to the Township Board, the Township Board introduced them on May 12, and so this evening you'd have the opportunity to adopt them. So you can, you know, you can go ahead and adopt them if you desire in one motion. I'm happy to go into more detail on each one of the, if there's any questions about any of the amendments, I'm happy to answer questions or go into more detail, but I think we discussed them at the last meeting, so.
Okay, sounds good. Any questions for Claire on these zoning amendments? And just for the watching public who can't sleep, it is zoning amendment 1-25 wireless communication facilities, 2-25 non-motorized access connections, and 3-25 vehicular stream crossing. Sure.
Zoning 1-25, now does that mean that the township would have no say on whether they want to put cell towers up on private property?
No.
So this would basically, it, it doesn't have any impact on cell towers on private property, so all the existing zoning standards would still stay in place. Anybody that wants to put a cell tower on private property has to go through special land use with Planning Commission.
This isn't really the home of.
So this is for any township property, to be consistent with township property with any other land use would be that it goes before the Township Board for any type of approval, contract, those types of things, because the township is exempt from zoning, so this was just an inconsistency to have site plan review on a township property.
We had language in there that said that the township had to go through the zoning, which was in conflict with another part of the zoning ordinance that said, we don't fall under the zoning ordinance. And actually, it was supposed to be in there under the wireless communication, and it slipped through that it was still in that portion, so, yeah, so this is addressing that.
These three were kind of housekeeping type, like we adopted the ordinance, and then, oops, there's a few things that we thought were there that weren't, that weren't there.
With that, is there, oh, go ahead.
Well, 2-25 helped with the state park and the gate.
No, so 2-25, we already require connections to the public right-of-way. This is really connecting to any adjacent properties, so this is pretty limited to that. But I like where you're going.
Is there, is there, are there other questions? Or is there a motion for the zoning amendments 1-25, 2-25, and 3-25?
I'll make a motion to adopt zoning amendment 1-25 wireless communication facilities, zoning amendment 2-25 non-motorized access connections, and zoning amendment 3-25 vehicular stream crossings as amended to the East Bay Township zoning ordinance.
Is there support?
Support.
Okay, there is a motion by Walters and support by MCortade for the three zoning ordinance amendments, and we'll do a roll call vote. Ann?
Walters?
Yes.
MCortade?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yes.
Bartlet?
Yes.
S-Cortade?
Yes.
Friend?
Yes. All right, very good, thank you for your work on those. We'll move into the Beach District Corridor Improvement Authority, so you can take that away, Claire.
Okay, so per the Public Act, which establishes the opportunity to create a corridor improvement authority, that's Public Act 57 of 2018, the next step for moving forward with the corridor improvement authority is to set a public hearing date. So the, tonight, the Township Board has the opportunity to pass a resolution that's basically an intent to create the corridor improvement authority. Doesn't create the corridor improvement authority, you're setting, the resolution language is that the township intends to move forward with it. You'd be setting a public hearing for August 11 of 2025. Between now and August 11, we will be working on updating the website, so we're looking to, in partnership with Beck and Rader, have very detailed information on our website about what is a corridor improvement authority, what are the plans and priorities that the township and the public has identified through the visioning process, what would this, what would this pay for, how would, how does tax increment financing work? So we're going to definitely, we're going to have some information, some visuals, just kind of showing how that incremental increase in tax value on the properties within that corridor improvement authority, how those function. We are planning to meet with regional taxing authorities. Beth and I actually have a meeting tomorrow morning with NMC, with the county, and with, with Beta, just to provide information, answer any questions. So it's beginning to just share that information. We are also planning to host a open house. The exact date, we're looking at either July 29 or 30, and we're still in the process of confirming that exact date, but we're planning to have open house here at the Township Hall, like 4 to 6, and then something at Hopsc, we're hoping to do hopscotch from like 6 to 8, but just invite all of the corridor residents, property owners, business owners, employees, broader members of the public to come, and we're going to do open house format, so it's more, you can come, ask questions, look at some, you know, interact with some information, as opposed to like a formal presentation. So we are looking to really get the word out. Also, in the next couple of months, we're going to be, all of the public posting, so I think we're required to send a mail letter notification to every property owner within the designated boundary. We're going to be posting the, I think it's required to post it in 20 different places, but we will, you know, work to do that even more, and really be trying to get the word out through social media and through email and through all of our different communication avenues. So the last thing I'll just mention is that there is a draft boundary map that we included in the packet. This, this boundary map is not finalized, it's not tied to the resolution, it's just for the Township Board to take a look at the boundary that we are thinking at this time. We do, we did take out the Pine Grove neighborhood, we took out a lot of the residential, because first of all, you need 51% of the ground floor square footage to be commercial. So we did have, Beck and Rader took a look at it, and they're still working with assessing to get the official square footage estimates, but right now we're looking at about 10 acres of commercial in that entire corridor, and about, I think it was like seven and a half acres of residential, so it's definitely, so it's, the boundary, I think, works with taking out some of those residential neighborhoods. So that's not to say that we can't continue to plan and look at improvements to the kind of surrounding area, but any type of TIF, the tax increment financing, would really need to be focused on just that corridor improvement authority boundary. We could look at grants, other partnerships, different ways to fund projects that are outside of that district.
Yeah, and I, if I could just, the residential that I'm very happy is still included is that Oak Street and Pine, because we have heard from several different households down there and community members, you know, really wanting a better pedestrian access down onto 31, that they use that there, and right now it's not a great access, so, yeah, that would be able to be part of potential improvement at some point.
I actually, Beth, just for clarification, I did ask Beck and Rader if they would be able to.
Oh, that's out of it? Is that the yellow? Sorry.
I asked them to go all the way down to Pine Street.
Okay.
And expand it, and I, I just sent them that email like later this afternoon.
Okay.
But I, that, I told them it was a priority in the, through the public input, and it's in our action plan.
I was thinking that we had that as a potential, go ahead, Mindy.
I'm just wondering, I know, I understand why we have Pine Grove not included, but we're also getting out of the Tart Trail in that area, and I'm just wondering, wanting to make sure that that's the best path with removing the Tart Trail in that area.
Well, and actually, that part ends up, the Tart Trail's in the city there.
Yeah, because Arrow Park is the city.
I mean, we have part of it, you remember, we partnered with the city and Tart years ago, but our part was pretty small in that, because we didn't have much of that, as you can see.
Yeah, we only have those few houses on Three Mile and Parsons before the TVA, or North End.
Oh, right here, okay.
Yeah. That's actually on the Tart.
Well, if we could do the jog there then to grab that part, instead of the jog that we have right now.
Yeah, I see what you're saying. Well, you can, was it with, can that be a fluid?
Yeah, we can take a look at that.
Okay.
We'll take a look at this, the township boundary, and, yeah, that sounds good.
So the resolution itself just establishes that we'll hold a public hearing for the establishment of the corridor improvement authority. It does not necessarily say that this is the boundary's cemented, so I believe that could be a fluid process as we go through the next 60 days. So with that, I think that I like hearing some of the public engagement that you're looking at doing, the open house at the township at the Beach District, I think that that's good, also taking a look at those boundaries. Any other questions, or is there a motion regarding, this would be Resolution 13, 2025-13?
I got a question.
Sure.
On the authority, if one is adopted, and I'm looking from the tax purpose, okay, if you've got a vacant lot sitting there, and I don't care what you put a price on, whatever the vacant lot is, that taxes are locked in at what that lot is, so if somebody builds a $12 million hotel, we don't get a dime of the thing above what the vacant lot was, am I correct?
The Township General Fund does not, so the Township General Fund is locked into that current tax, and then any incremental increase, so if it, yeah, if they built a $12 million hotel, then all of that incremental increase would go back into the authority to, to pay for the public infrastructure investments for a certain period of time to be determined by the township. And so at, at the end of that time, then the, the authority would, you know, cease to exist, and all of that money would go back into the township and, and the other taxing authorities.
Couple other questions.
Oh, I was just going to, if I could, just on that question, it's, it's like an automatic allocation of the funds, so if there were not a corridor improvement authority, that would come under, a portion of it, right, would come under the township, our .68 mils or whatever it is. But in this instance, then, we have that plus some additional tax funds from other taxing authorities that can go into the infrastructure and improvements in that corridor.
Okay, the other question is, special assessment for emergency services.
Not included. Not included.
Okay, but the question is, if you got that vacant lot at $50,000, and there's $12 million hotel sitting on it after it's already, the authority's already created, do we collect off the $12 million for the special assessment?
Yes, yes.
So it, it goes up with the value every year?
Yeah.
The specials?
Yes.
Okay.
Same with like the schools would collect on that 12 million.
Okay, and we're 100% sure that's exactly what it is, because I've heard both ways, and that's why I'm asking.
That is the information that I have read and have been given.
That's accurate, that is accurate.
Can we get something in writing?
Sure.
Legal opinion from an attorney, because we're going to have more and more of this stuff coming before us.
Sure.
That want tax payments.
Yeah, and we can.
No better term.
We can get that too from State Tax Commission or Department of Treasury as well, sure. Yeah, but that, that is accurate, they still will pay, they'll still be assessed, they'll still have a value of an assessment, but, and they still will have to pay the Public Act 33 on, on that full assessment. And those are large words, so if I'm wrong, I'll have to eat them, but I'm, I'm like.
If you're wrong, we're going to straighten you up, you're going to pay up.
Okay.
Any other questions on, if anyone has other just ideas, thoughts on how to get the word out, we really do, it's, you know, it's a two-month period, we want to make sure that we're getting the word out as best as possible, so if anyone has ideas, thoughts, we have a really good stakeholder list of businesses along that corridor, residents, people that are interested, so we'll be communicating with, with that list.
I'm going to expect that the answer is yes, but I'm going to ask, is this written in the newsletter that goes out August 1st?
Yes, it is.
Goes out July 1st.
July 1st, that's what I meant to say, thank you, boy, even better.
I did write the article.
Okay.
Yeah.
We'll see if I made the cut.
Claire's trying to remember what she wrote right now.
That was right after surgeries.
That's when you write your best.
That's okay, I have a note here myself to check that.
Yeah.
No, I do remember the corridor improvement authority being in that article, so.
So then my other question, has Leah been in part of that discussion to get it, they can put it on that ticker underneath their other TV channels?
Oh, okay, yeah, we can definitely follow up on that, it's a good idea.
And if we get the dates for the open house, we can add those to the newsletter, and I don't think that we have those for sure, so, and they're just now putting that together, so we have a tiny little bit of time that we can firm those up.
By Monday.
Okay, we can do that.
When she says by Monday, you know, I can push her to like Wednesday sometimes.
We'll get it by Monday.
By Monday.
Okay. Other questions?
This resolution doesn't, doesn't establish the TIF district, it doesn't establish how long the TIF district would last, it doesn't, it doesn't do anything except for establish the intent to make a corridor improvement authority.
That's correct, and even on August 11, when you hold the public hearing to establish the corridor, corridor improvement authority, that's not establishing a TIF either, so that's just establishing that structure that can move forward with projects, so that would be a future, future date, we're looking at like October to start working on TIF, and so, yeah, so it's kind of a iterative community process, and we're trying to get the word out.
So for clarification, this is resolved by the Board of Trustees of East Bay Charter Township, that one, East Bay Charter Township will hold a public hearing regarding the establishment of the corridor improvement authority on August 11 at 6:30 PM at the East Bay Township Hall. That's all this resolution does.
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2025-13, intent to establish a corridor improvement authority.
I'd support.
Okay, there is a motion by Walters and support by Bartlet to adopt Resolution 2025-13. 2025-13, Anne, can you do a roll call?
Certainly. Walters?
Yes.
Bartlett?
Yes.
S. Cortaid?
Yes.
M. Cortaid?
Yes.
Cook?
Yes.
Lyle?
Yep.
Friend?
Yes, all right, thank you very much. With that, we will move on to the amended business item of the Rotary Charities Grant, you have a document here on your desk, I'm happy to tell you that we received a $50,000 grant award from Rotary Charities, and this is the grant agreement, and we would need authority to sign this grant agreement. This as well goes into the funding for Safe Routes to School, which includes 1.5 million from the Safe Routes to School project, the, almost $800,000 from the RAP grant award that we just got word on, we also have $50,000 from the Olson Foundation, and then this is $50,000 from the Rotary Charities, so good, good community support for that. Is there a motion to approve the Rotary Charities grant agreement?
I'll make that motion.
Support.
Okay, motion is made by Cook and supported by Walters, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed by no?
No.
Okay, show that the motion passes with M. Cortaid dissenting, and with that, we move forward to the next agenda item. Claire, I will say thank you very much, as you, everyone knows, Claire has just had shoulder surgery, and she took about two days off, and has been working half-days with that in between medication, so we appreciate your, your efforts in keeping all of this rolling. So we will move on to the Residential Housing District, PA 237 and 22, in the Brownfield Housing Program, this is Susan Wenzlich, and Susan is part of the development team from Crimson, they have a development that was approved, as Mindy knows, through the Planning Commission, and they are in the beginning phases of putting together their Brownfield Plan, which is a TIF, like you're familiar with, with Allen Edwin, and though they are looking at adding, layering on, integrating the Public Act 237 of 2022, so I'll let Susan go through this.
Thank you, thanks for letting us take a few minutes of your meeting time tonight. I also want to introduce two members of the development team, Steve Kelverly is here, I think you've seen Steve before-
Hi, Steve.
And Kevin Kiefer.
Hi, Kevin, thank you both for being here.
Yeah, thank you. I'm gonna bring a milk crate next time I come and talk to you, because I, I can't see over my screen, so, we, what I would like to do is, we're coming with two asks to you over the course of the summer, one is for a tax abatement, and the other one is for tax increment financing, and when Beth and I talked about this initially, it was going to be strictly about this, this tax abatement, but I wanted you to be able to see the context of the tax abatement in the whole project, so we're gonna go through the whole project really briefly, also, just to be clear, our numbers, Beth saw our numbers today for the first time, so, these are still in process, a bit squirrely, subject to change before you see anything for the final time.
And I just, I appreciate Susan mentioning that, just like when we went through this process with Live AE, their numbers were very different from the final ones that you saw from the very beginning, so we just wanted to make that distinction, we have, these are in here just for kind of scope, you know, and kind of a idea of degree, but they're not final.
Right, thank you, Beth. So this is, this is a big development, this is 240 units, all 240 will be for 100% area median income or below, so basically, people making 30, $35 an hour, and down to about 60% area median income, which is people making 20 bucks an hour, so that's a lot of your hotel workers, retail workers, people who are working at the Grand Travers Resort, who live in, in East Bay Township, so this is a lot of your local workforce, and the, I have the rentals on one of the upcoming slides, but this is an almost $49 million project, so it's a big one, it's gonna have a lot of amenities, and the next slide actually has the, the layout, but not a rendering yet, so clubhouse, everybody gets a carport, there'll be dog park, and workout rooms, club, like an office space, and bus stops for both TCAPs and for beta buses, and inside the development, it's not gonna be out, like, on Three Mile Road, it'll be on, you know, there'll be a shelter on the interior of the development project. So 60 of the one-bedroom units will be really targeted to the lower-income people, that's the people making around 20 bucks an hour, and what happens when we get down to that income level is that the rents are gonna be so low that the revenue from rent doesn't cover the cost of construction, and I, I try and make this low numbers because I'm not the, my last math class was during the Carter administration, so, and the young people go, Carter who? So what happens is, you don't have enough rent money coming in to cover your, your annual costs, so they're gonna have a bank loan to pay for the construction, they're gonna have to pay staff, they're gonna have snowplow costs, and outside maintenance costs, and all the stuff, but at the rents that we're looking at, there's just not enough money coming in to cover all those costs, so I have one project actually in Traverse City where their annual debt payments, it's a much smaller one, but the numbers work for me, it's $270,000 of annual debt payments, 170,000 of annual revenues from their rents, so you've got $100,000 a year gap, because their rents are so low, so you either have to increase the rents, or you find an incentive someplace, and so what we're seeing a lot in these housing projects now is using TIF to pay that gap between revenues and, and costs. So, again, very high-level, very brief numbers, our current taxable, our current property taxes on this piece of property, and they, the developers have not closed on this property to purchase it from the closes yet, that happens this week, but the property taxes we anticipate after closing are gonna be $60,000 and change, once the construction is finished, on an almost $50 million project, the property value, the taxable value goes up to seven, about 17,000, and that's, the 2027 number is the first year when we have complete construction, when all the units are finished. So you have a printout of the slide presentation, you can look at the numbers at your leisure, but we're looking at a 30-year Brownfield Plan, we hope, and about $20 million of tax increment financing total. So this is really hard to see, and I apologize, you might want to look at your paper copy for this part, and what this does is show you what area median incomes are, so at 60% are our lowest rent level for this project, that's $41,000, that's just over $20 an hour, 40,800, I think, is $20 an hour, and then going up to 100%, somebody, a single person making 69,200, or it could be two people in a household, that goes up a little bit more, and you can see what the numbers do as area median incomes go up, but this is the level of income that we're looking at, so this is people, you know, the, the classic example that you've heard a million times before is the nurses, the firefighters, the cops, you know, people who are making good wages, but who are not able to live in this community because housing costs are too high. So the housing development activities, when we come to you with a Brownfield Plan, are going to be site preparation, infrastructure, getting surveys, other soft costs like that, design engineering, that kind of thing, and then that financing gap to help us with the rents, and the important thing on this slide is at the bottom, the county requires, and I think that, this is so interesting, I love looking at this stuff because I'm such a nerd, the county requires a comparables study, so like when you buy a house, and your bank says, oh, you have to go out and get comps to see if this house is more or less expensive, or is it right in the range of other houses that are comparable to the one that you're buying, you can do the same thing with apartments, so the apartment comparable study that we just got in May, so it is brand spanking new, shows comparables for a one-bedroom, basically 1,400 square foot, big one-bedroom unit, a comparable rent in this area, it, you know, they're only looking at Grand Travers County rents, is over $2,000, and this project, we're gonna charge 1,300, so we have an almost $700 a month reduction in rents just on that one-bedroom unit, the others are not quite as big, you know, it reduces a little bit for the two-bedroom, the 1,060, and then almost $1,000 difference on the three-bedroom unit, so that's month after month after month, every year, that this revenue is not coming to the developers to help pay their costs, and that's a trade-off if, that they are absolutely willing to make and want to make to provide housing for the workforce here, but they've gotta make that money up somewhere, otherwise those rents have to go up.
Hey, Susan?
Yeah.
Is that one-bedroom really larger than the three-bedroom?
I will defer to the development team for that one, that could be our typo.
That's a typo, yeah.
Okay.
One-bedrooms are-
I was thinking that would seem really big.
That's another big one, one-bedrooms are 605 to 63.
Thank you.
630 square feet?
Yeah.
Okay, so like 600 square feet, I don't know where 1,400 came from.
And as well, those, those rents for the two-bedroom are, are pretty close-
Right.
-because comparative, and that's accurate as, as well from the study?
Um, I hope so.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine, again, these are rough numbers and-
This was a little seat of our pants, we decided to do this presentation, what, Thursday last week, so.
Okay.
And we could, or, we will provide you accurate numbers when we come back with the Brownfield Plan, obviously.
There's a, there's a lot of work we do between now and bringing in the final proposal, so.
I'm guessing that this market rate on the one-bedroom is not right.
Okay, we'll check it out, Mindy. So then, that's the tax increment financing side of it, and we will continue to work, we've got a Brownfield Plan just about ready to send to the county for their review before you see it, we will work with Beth and Claire on that, and they've been already fantastic to work with, and then, as we go through the county process, you know, we'll be keeping you posted, at, at some point this summer, we would like to come back and ask for your approval of a Brownfield Plan, but we're not there yet. The thing that comes up next, though, is in the next week, I would like to get you, and you being the Beth, probably, an application for a residential housing tax abatement, there is no application, okay, so this is a relatively new tax abatement, it's been around for a little, around two years, and it's been used once so far, it's been approved for one project in Emmett County, a rehab project in Petoskey, so there is not a whole lot of precedent for this, there's no application form, the state doesn't have a big website with all the stuff on it, so we are somewhat making it up as we go along, what I would like to do is get a letter to Beth to apply for this tax abatement, and I've got the process on the next slide, but the tax abatement uses 50% of a statewide average of a bunch of other taxes that are not housing taxes, and then the abatement applies only to the, to the buildings, so the township would continue to, and, and what we would do is layer this along with the TIF, so one on top of the other, so you would still have a baseline amount of taxes coming in, and that's basically the taxes on the land as it exists right now, in a prior slide, I said that the taxable value right now, or after the property changes hands, should be about $60,000, so you'll get that $60,000 every year. We also can't TIF on special assessments and debt, so you have TCAPs debt that people pay on, and you have one other special assessment, we would, I believe, and Beth and I are still having a conversation about this, but I believe you will collect the taxes on both special assessments, the millage on both special assessments, and so that's still kind of up in the air, we're, we're reading statute and trying to figure it out, but the amount that we have used to, because there's, you know, it's this weird big half of a bunch of whole average of util, of like industrial properties and a couple other different kinds of property, there's, it's a, it's very similar to one called the Neighborhood Enterprise Zone tax abatement, and so we have used the NEZ number to create these numbers, we're gonna have to ask the state to actually give us the number that they want to use, but this should be pretty close, so the tax abatement would total just over $3 million, and what we would do is the tax abatement plus the TIF for the first 12 years, and the tax abatement maxes at 12 years, you could actually decide to make it less than 12, it is completely up to the township, but we would ask for 12, and after that 12 years is up, then we would continue to use TIF for as long as we have an approved work plan, or Brownfield Plan for TIF, so, this is a lot, it's, and we will lay it out better once we get all of the numbers put together, so that you can see it in a clearer way, and how this would work out, we have some really squirrely tables so far that show it, but not in a way that most people can understand, if they haven't had math since the Carter administration. So, process, yes, sir?
On the sheet you just had up there, on the bottom, I'm a little slow, I guess, but it said requested abatement, non-capturable millage, debt, and special assessment.
So, so with the special assessment district for this, if you read the, the statute, it's a little confusing as to whether it captures Public Act 33, which all of ours are Public Act 33, I believe it says that it would capture Public Act 33, but what we can do to mitigate that is we can do a contract with the developer for services that equals the amount of that millage.
Okay, but that millage for the urgency services would be based on the actual value of that property, and if you build more, the value would go up till you hit whatever, what, 48 million?
Yep, that does not get frozen, and we can't collect it under the TIF either.
You can collect it under the TIF, the Public Act 33, special assessment, you can collect under the Brownfield, and, but you cannot collect it, my understanding, under the 237, but you do that under an agreement, and within the agreement, you can accommodate for the increasing value.
If that's what we're gonna have to do, I want the attorney to sign off on it, and it would go, the assessment would go up as the, to the actual value of what the build-out is as it goes.
Right.
Okay.
Legal counsel has to draft that agreement, so, legal counsel has to draft that agreement, yep.
Okay.
Yeah.
I expect Beth and I will be spending a lot of time together over the next week or two, as we work this out.
Yeah, we've got a couple things for, you know, one, just for clarification, typically, the Grand Travers County Brownfield Authority wants our approval before it gets to the Grand Travers County Brownfield-
Right.
And goes to the county, so we would need that information back to this board first before you're there, although you can do an introductory meeting with the Brownfield Authority, I'm sure that they would love that. With the application, we can, before, as you're getting ready to go through here, you'll see that this board has to set up a residential housing district to have the application applicable to, so we would have to go through that process, which both the, establishing the district and, and approving potentially the application, both involve a public hearing, so follow those, and then, I wanted to mention the Public Act 33 and the service agreement, and then the other thing that we need to factor in that we'll be talking about is similar that we did on the other Brownfield, which is factor in, they're putting in the trails, like right along Three Mile in front of their property, we're gonna look at building, incorporating into that, just as we did in Live AE, a little bit north and across the road, so that their residents are integrated with the Conservancy's trail system, so that we have to look at, we looked at costs for that, that's about 250,000, it was about 400,000 with Live AE to bring that down and tag into Safe Routes to School, so those are things that, yeah, we'll be talking a lot in the next couple of weeks.
Yep, I'll be, I'll have East Bay Township very much on my mind, so the process for this, there's, there's two major steps that have to happen with the township's approval, first is we submit this application, and then we would ask you to set up a public hearing, and in a timeline that Beth provided to us, our hope was that we could come back to you in July for having this neighborhood, what do they call it?
Residential housing-
The residential housing district, thank you, Beth, have the residential housing district approved by the board, potentially at the July meeting, we would then come back to you at the August meeting with the request for approval of the actual abatement, so the first thing on your list would be just to say, this piece of property is a residential neighborhood tax district, so if that, Beth, if you're in support of doing that in July, that would be great, otherwise, you tell us when.
I will talk, we'll talk about that, yep.
Yep, and so then the next step, as I said, if, if we can get the district in July, we would come back in August and request approval of the abatement itself, and at that point, we'll have really good numbers, and good comparison, and how the tax abatement and the TIF fit together, so that we can show you kind of a year-by-year, here's what happens, and here's what happens with the special abate, or the special assessments, and so on. So, at this point, because we have, you know, such a financing gap on this project, and the taxes that will be paid are not enough to cover all the debt, the assessment really is going to help. And it's hard for me to, you know, to wrap my head around, well, the taxes are the taxes, right? So, you know, if, if your taxes are a hundred thousand dollars a year, and you get that back under TIF, that's what you get. What the abatement does, because the developers wouldn't be paying those taxes upfront, is it helps with their cash flow. Under a TIF plan, typically you'd get one check a year from the county. The Brownfield Authority sends you, you know, your, if your taxes again are a hundred thousand dollars, they send you a hundred thousand dollars once a year. Having the tax abatement, though, will really help with cash flow, so that they can pay those bills as they're coming in. So that's why we're asking for the tax abatement to be layered on top of the TIF. Happy to answer any questions? There's my contact info if you think of one after.
I think, well, first, does anyone have any questions for Susan, and then I want to pose some more questions?
I think it's for her. I think it's probably for you. Is our engineer looked at this, you had two hundred and forty units, is infrastructure, the sewer lanes and stuff, going to handle the increase?
Oh, yeah.
This already went through Planning Commission, Caroline. This already went through Planning Commission.
And, and Brian takes a.
When I see all these places, we, over on Four Mile and stuff, that's the first thing I think about. Are these pipes big enough to handle it? Or all of a sudden, are we going to have to dig up and put new pipes in, bigger?
Well, actually, right now, we're getting ready to dig up and put some new pipes in in the next year or two. So, and one of the things when we're doing that project that you guys are familiar with is through the Eagle permitting, you have to take a look at all the REUs within the township and within Acme Township, and make sure that you can not only service those REUs, but you can service the growth that they factor in. So that's, that has, is factored into some of the projects we're doing. Plus, as Mindy mentioned, engineering always looks at the projects that are going through the Planning Commission, and additionally, before they build, they will have to get their Eagle permits for the water and sewer infrastructure that they put in on the site. And so they'll, they have to make sure that that passes the muster too with Eagle. So, good question, though.
One of, all my questions are good. I don't.
I've known you long enough. Not every question is good.
This is Section nineteen. Okay, is this only part of Section nineteen, or is, this isn't the whole thing, is it?
No, it's about twenty acres to.
And what was her down there, do you, anybody remember? Forty, eighty acre something? Down here on Three Mile.
Doesn't it go Three Mile to Town Line? Not this piece, but like when Klaus had his.
Klaus has a huge swath of property there, yeah.
We'd approved the Mishda project on that years ago.
Well, when I looked at it, it looked like it was only a piece of, but.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, and when you take a look at this too, just kind of, if you turn it this way, it kind of helps too. As you can see, well, it's got north on the map too. But yeah, so it doesn't go all the way over.
Doesn't go over to Town Line, so it's only like halfway across. It's only going a little bit farther than the industrial parks.
And actually, we were really happy to side note with Beta taking a look at this, because at first, we were concerned with what kind of access Beta was willing to do, because they had two routes and they kind of don't, this is kind of lost in, to me, it was like no man's land between two different routes and which one wanted to capture it. They ended up saying they're going to come down and then into the industrial, and then go north into this, they're putting a roundabout, I believe, right there at the halfway across and the southernmost point of this development. And there will be bus infrastructure there, so that's, Mindy's more familiar with it and Claire than I, but we were happy to see that they're going to have safe access to those, those busing options. Other questions?
Yeah, I've got a couple. One, one of the things that, obviously, you know, we have a need here for workforce housing and certainly support that. But the one question that I always have, looking at one of these structures, kind of a long-term deal, whether it be TIF or tax abatement or both, is, you know, in this case, y'all are advertising two hundred and forty units that are, looks like all two hundred and forty are targeted for that workforce housing?
Yep, all, all will be under a hundred percent.
How do you, how do you manage occupancy of two hundred and forty units? And when you have sort of outside market forces with people that are outside of that AMI that are wanting to rent, do you, do you turn them down and say, no, we're going to keep this vacant. This is a reserve for someone else? And how do you manage that sort of over time, but still take advantage of all the, the tax benefits?
Sure, yeah, it's mandated through Mishda, and I always, I'm not great with the names of all the stuff, but we have to do income verifications annually with our current residents and with new applicants.
Okay.
So if somebody comes in and they don't meet the income requirements, we simply get rental.
Okay, all right. So it's just, it's just off the table. You got to fit within that slot, that thirty to a hundred percent or whatever you're targeting here. Sixty to a hundred, okay.
And then, kind of speaking to the need that you were talking about, unfortunately, there is, there is definitely the market that they will be able to rent all of these out because there's such a need.
Sure, sure, yeah. And then, and then, you know, just trying to understand a little bit, obviously, administratively, this is nuanced. There's a lot of paperwork. Obviously, y'all are going through like a lot of legal counsel to get opinions and reviews of these things. What, what, what's sort of the, the cost stack from, from a compliance standpoint, ongoing? And your sort of upfront cost to get this all pulled together? I mean, how much administrative cost is involved here?
Upfront is your department. As far as ongoing, though, it ends up functioning just like the normal apartment community. Any of the apartment communities we manage. Income verification is some extra steps, maybe an extra five thousand dollars a year that we'll have to send our manager to related to like Mishda changes.
Training or something?
Training. They always have some changes that they want to do.
Okay.
But otherwise, it functions very similarly to a regular apartment community.
Okay, all right.
And you have others of these that you're already familiar with the process?
We do have a couple.
Is there annual reporting that has to be done and everything?
Yeah, I was just curious, you know, for, for the, the dollar effort that's put into this, you know, how much of it is actually a true benefit to the, to the tenants versus, you know, get gobbled up in typical kind of administrative bureaucracy type costs? I was curious. And any other one relative to taxes? I think we talked about this on the Live AE project. That was a concern of mine. I would assume that, you know, y'all will or do anticipate some school age kids, obviously with a TCAP's bus stop, probably don't have a guess as to, you know, what that population might look like, but you know, there's certainly a potential to inject, you know, new students into the school district. And I think I had a question on the previous one about sort of diluting that, you know, that state funding, because we're kind of moving it towards, you know, the TIF part of the project. And in, in this, I don't know if this is kind of part, part of this, but we had this frequently asked questions on the, as part of the packet. There's a statement on the back that said the state, within sixty days after granting the housing exemption certificate, the state treasurer may exempt fifty or a hundred percent of the state, I don't know if that's a, state education tax from the millage rate calculation for residential housing facilities taxes. Is that something that is being counted on as part of this?
We expect to try and capture the state taxes, whether it's with the tax abatement or with the TIF. That's got to be part of the project stack. The state, on a rental, puts in a lot of money. That's twenty-four mils of state taxes out of here. I think you've got forty-four mils here for non-homestead. So it's a lot of money. We will be asking the state for every nickel. I do want to be clear, though, that the state school funding is not based on how much you put in. It's based on the number of kids you have in chairs on the count day. So if you have kids, and they have like the pizza party in the fall, and they have the, come and get the cookies, and we're going to play the games, and we're going to have a day of fun stuff. It's because they need rear ends and seats on that day because that's the count day, and the school funding is based totally on the number of kids in school, not on how much money you put into the pot. So TIF does not affect your, how much revenue your schools get. They will actually get more revenues if you have more kids in the school.
Sure, no, I, I get that. I guess I'm, I'm looking at it in a broader scheme. There's a big pot in Lansing.
Right.
A big pot of money that gets collected.
Oh, yeah.
And then it gets redistributed.
Yep, and now they want to take some of it out for your roads.
Conceivably, this is just a concern, long-term, probably not something that's going to happen short-term here, but conceivably, if more and more of these TIF projects are implemented, then that pot gets a little bit more diluted and a little bit more diluted and a little bit more diluted. And where are they going to cover the additional cost needed? They're going to come back to the taxpayer in some other.
And it's, I mean, right now, that money doesn't exist. You know, the sixty thousand dollars that they're going to be paying in taxes after they close on this property, you know, includes that much for schools.
Sure.
And so there will be more kids in the school, and the state won't necessarily have more money coming in until later. But it doesn't actually decrease the amount of money available. It does, as you say, dilute is a good word for that, because you are trying to fund. But, you know, are you transferring kids from Glen Arbor Schools to East Bay Township, or from Traverse City Schools to East Bay Township? So it may be still the same number of kids, they're just in a different chair.
Yeah, because Michigan is a state where I don't think overall our population is increasing, although we are in this area.
One question on what Mr. Cook has about the rent, you know, you're going to fill it up with the, what was it, AMI base? I think I asked this question before in a project, and I don't remember the answer, but let's say you, you get it all rented a hundred percent. These people, a lot of them are going to college. All of a sudden, they graduate, they got their masters, whatever, they go out, get a job, so their income goes way up.
Unless they have a liberal arts degree. It doesn't go way up.
I'm just asking, do you throw them out, or what do you?
No, that's, so it depends on the source of funding. With TIF and with the tax abatement, you don't have to throw people out of their homes if their income goes over the hundred percent. So if you move into this project and you meet the income requirement when you move in, you're done. You're good to go. If you use another tool called LI-TAC, low-income housing tax credits, that one does require people to move out if they exceed. We, we actually had this during COVID. We had, remember nurses were getting like combat pay during COVID. They got all these bonuses for working in, during COVID. Some of the nurses in the subsidized housing in Benzy County where I live actually had to get thrown out of their apartments because with that bonus, they made too much money. It was ridiculous. Anyway. So if you, if your income increases under this tool, you do not have to ask people to move out. With the tax abatement, they can stay there until they, until there is a natural vacancy, and then the vacancy has to be filled with someone who makes a hundred percent AMI or below.
I do think you recalculate the rent based on their, their growing income, though.
I think it's something like that.
Yeah.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So essentially, that annual review is for incoming tenants.
Correct, yep.
Not existing tenants.
Right.
So it's not like you're doing two hundred and forty
Thankfully, yes.
income reviews annually.
Yeah, so when they rent out, they'll get, you know, the, the tenant has to fill out a form that Mishda provides that says, here's what my income is. I think they have to provide a copy of their taxes, or pay, you know, take paychecks or something like that to show what their income is. And so when you come in, you have to meet that hundred percent or below, or for the ones that are specially set aside for sixty to eighty percent, they'll have to meet those income requirements. Once they're in, they're in. They're good. And the annual reporting that the developers will be required to do is a report to the county, to the Brownfield Authority, and the Brownfield Authority then reports to the state. So the Brownfield Authority provides a form that says, here's how many people moved in this year, here's what their incomes were, here's how many people are still in apartments, here's how many are vacant, blah, blah, blah. So there is a format that mirrors the state's form that this county has to fill in, that they will have to fill in.
So it, at first glance, and the first year or two, it will be massive
Yeah.
in comparison to what it would be five years later.
Right, exactly.
I thought you did have to do income validation on an annual basis.
Mishda has clarified that and said, no, it only has to be when you move in.
Oh.
Yeah, it, you know, changes frequently.
All right. Any other questions? Okay, well, I think one of the things we're looking at doing, we've been in touch with Yarrow Brown. We may bring her back in July as well to do just informational deep dive on residential housing district. Because one of the things that this board will need to decide is, what do those district boundaries look like? Clearly, it could just encapsulate where this development is. It could also be additional property around it. I'm not sure. I think that there might be some activity on the neighboring property, and I don't know what's planned there. All the way from, you know, just doing this property to something like, you know, township could decide, and I'm not suggesting this, but all the way to including the property within the growth boundary. So, you know, we, we will need to take a look at that, and I think if we get some more information in July, that'll be helpful to do that. And we can take a look at what those notifications or requirements are and those steps, and make sure that we're hitting those. We'll try to move this forward and keep it going forward for the developer based on, you know, the information and the timing of the notification requirements. Does that sound reasonable to everybody? Okay, well, thank you very much. We appreciate you being here. Do you have any questions for any, for us? Okay.
We're actually closing on the properties around morning.
Okay. Good for you. Well, we will, we will keep taking a crack at this and, and bring back some information. Thank you. Yep, thank you. Okay, with that, keep me on track here. I think that we are to staffing with the office manager, the communication specialist, and the history intern. Excuse me, with that, I'll give you a rundown on all of those. The communication specialist, we had an application, and I interviewed the individual. Very well qualified, has some good background, but as we were talking about things, really, her timing, she will be working more remotely from home, using her own office equipment and so forth, because she has all of her software, you know, graphic and that sort of thing on her own. So that really lends much better to a contractor relationship. So, in setting her up as a vendor, I wanted to bring that back here because I didn't want a open job description and you wondering, you know, what, what happened with that. So with that, I have in the packet a, her sample. Let me find that here, hold on. Independent contractor agreement. So, yeah, Lauren Maxwell, she excellent communication skills, right on top of communication. Claire got to meet her when she came in. And she does logoing and communication for some organizations and things that you would be familiar with in town. And then, let's see, office manager, I had some applications, three applications, four applications, three interviews. One of the applicants during that timeframe got a full-time job and was interested in that, so took her hat out of the ring with that. Interviewed and am recommending Taylor Richards for that position. You can see the amended, you do have an amended offer of employment. I did discuss it with the applicant and recommended part-time employee, and they understood and were fine with that. And so that's the recommendation to offer that part-time office manager position to Taylor Richards. Looks like she can start in about two weeks, which works out well for some of our computer changes that we're going to be doing in the office. And then the history intern, Claire interviewed two different people. One, it was going to be very difficult with housing, and just as we're talking about, right? And it was a student who didn't have a car, and so housing and transportation, it was very difficult. The other person was, looked like they could do the job, but as we really started talking about things, between the time that we put the position in the budget and the time that we were looking at actually. that we were looking at actually instituting it, we had a lot more projects that were taking up time that we didn't plan on from that point in time when we did the budgeting. So at this point, we're suggesting leaving that unfilled at this point, just because from a management standpoint, our time and capacity in managing that history intern is limited. So we would like to leave that open at this point. And I think that is about it. So, what I would be seeking, if there aren't any questions, or if there are questions, that's fine, but I would be seeking for the township board to concur with the offer of employment to Taylor Richards, and also to authorize the independent contractor agreement to be entered into, for the part-time communications specialist. Sure.
Well, I'm looking at the application of employment, and although it's not required for them to drive a vehicle other places, it does say they don't have a Michigan driver's license, yet.
Mm-hmm, so for Taylor, yeah, she would probably still have a Florida one, could be, could be, yep, she's actually been here for a little bit, but I didn't get into, as far as family relationships, could be a military ID, I know lots of people.
Because I hadn't seen it until we were discussing it, it just popped out at me.
Mm-hmm, yep, could be, like I said, military, I know.
So she has a valid driver's license, it might not be in Michigan.
Could be.
Yeah. Any other questions, or Mindy?
With regards to Lauren Maxwell's contract agreement, I think we should get a little bit more specific on how often the invoices are submitted, and how, you know, whether it's once a week, once a month, kind of thing, I would like to add that to the.
Typically, we do with contractors, we haven't done that with Carl Ferguson, and what he does is invoice once a month, and that's what I believe she will be doing as well, too.
Can we put that in here?
We can, sure.
I know I have met her, but I do have just a couple of small concerns. I'd like to see her also have some time in the office, just so that she has that ability to communicate with those that she's trying to do that communications for.
Yeah.
If it's all remote.
So it's not completely remote, but you wouldn't be familiar with that, because you didn't, weren't in, you know?
I wasn't invited to the, to the interview.
Well, you wouldn't be in the interview, yeah. But what we talked about is, with her other work, because she'll be combining these, she is, she has time in the morning and in the afternoons, and over lunch hour as well, lunchtime, so she can take meetings during the day, so she would be able to stop in, pop in, talk about, say for example, the newsletter, or different things with the social media and so forth. So she's not totally remote.
And then, number two, I realize that she's a professional, and that this is a contracted rate that's been agreed with. I would like, I wouldn't want to necessarily commit to after six months, it increases by $5. I'd like to see some, some of the work, and how things are going before that becomes an automatic increase.
Sure, so that was part of negotiation on what the rate would be, obviously, you know, she would prefer it be 35, but, so let's start at 30, and after six months, we'll go to 35. Clearly, if I didn't think that she was worth 35 at six months, we wouldn't continue the relationship or the contract. But that's a pretty reasonable price for, for communications and social media and so forth.
Those were my only two questions at the time.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the independent contractor agreement, with the added language that she will invoice monthly for Lauren Maxwell for services provided as communications specialist.
Okay, who supported? Okay, there is a motion by Cook, and support by Walters. Any other questions? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed by no?
No.
Okay, that was no, where?
Here.
Here, okay, so show that M. Cortaid and S. Cortaid dissented. All right, Eddie, another, we're looking for a motion on the office manager.
I'll make a motion to approve Taylor Richards' offer of employment.
Support.
Okay, there's a motion by Walters and support by Cook regarding concurrence with the offer of employment for Taylor Richards. Any further questions? Okay, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed by no? Okay, show that the motion passes with M. Cortaid dissenting. All right, and with that, we are at the end of our agenda, is, we have almost worn out the public, but not quite. If there's any public comment, please go ahead and make your way to the podium. Okay, seeing no public comment, our next meeting, we are looking for a special meeting, I believe I have some dates from, I need
30th.
30th?
June 30th.
June 30th, works for you. And just so you guys all know, I'm trying to coordinate this with Acme Township too, so it's not even, you know, difficult, it's hard enough doing it for one board, much less for two together. Sue, did you?
I already told you I can't do June, July.
July was, July worked. Matt, did you have any? Doesn't matter to you, okay. All right, well, I'll get with Doug and see what we can work out with that, and hopefully we won't have to scrap those dates and put it even off further, so. And our regular meeting is July, is it 14th? I'm trying to remember.
July 14th.
July 14th, so we will see you all next month. If there's no objections, then we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.